I'd like to ask Chuck if he would do an invocation for us and we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
If y'all will pray with me, please. Our dear heavenly Father, we thank you for everything you've given us. We thank you for this day, this city, the homeowners association. We're just so happy, Lord, but we ask that you'll stop this war in Ukraine. Stop Russia, stop all the bloodshed and death and destruction. We ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
As everyone can see, we have a map up on the screen here and I've got... I'm just going to introduce people first to start out with. This is Dawn Pilcher, LJA Engineering, and Victoria Dai. Those are our two engineers here. And we've got Jessica Deedown and she's driven down here from Austin this morning. And she's from Langford and Company or Associates. And that's C.D. Woodrum. He always stays in the background, but today he's not. Anyway, we're just thrilled to have them here. I am not going to be doing a lot of this. I'm going to turn it over to Dawn. And the first item on the agenda is questions and discussion regarding the $11.48 million grant. I imagine people have seen LJA out there, people with their shirts on and they're out doing surveying and doing preliminary work. So they've been quite busy. They're good... Dawn and Victoria will give us an update on where we are with the process. And of course, we're going to soon have to look at the transfer of property or the purchase of property from the association by the city as part of this grant. And we did get permission from GLO or they said it was okay to do this in three different segments, phases. And so the first phase will be the Camelot Dam way in the back. And what we're working on is getting all the coordinates so that we can go ahead and get an appraisal done. But Dawn, I'm going to turn it over to you to give us a little... Dawn or Victoria, however you want to do this.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we're really proud to be able to help you guys with this project.
One other thing, guess who did it? Guess whose idea this was? She wrote the grant, she submitted it, and that's how we got it, was Dawn Pilcher.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I mean, we really are proud to be able to help you guys with some flood control and restoration of some dams to make sure that you've got a really long history moving forward with some stability in these structures. As the mayor said, this is going to be worked out in three parts. And the reason we're doing that is so that we can start at the back and work our way toward the front. It just doesn't make sense to do a lot of work at the entry to the city and then drive over all of that with heavy trucks. There is a lot of dirt work that's going to have to be done and a number of things. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Victoria to give you an update on exactly where we are in the project. She's actually managing this project. We have a number of engineers and specialists working on it. But we'll get an update from Victoria and then we'll take questions.
Okay, so we've been working a lot on this project. I know that you can't... You know, there are no products that we're submitting at this point, but there are a lot of behind-the-scenes work that's being done. So our survey has been completed. We had broken them up in two ways of collecting data. We had our guys go out there and field collect data, and that's actually shooting points on the ground. They have collected over thousands of points. And we also had our aerial group go over and fly over the city and collect aerial data that would kind of give us an idea of how the entire city... The topographic data of the entire city. A lot of information coming in, so it takes months and months for our guys to process this data, create models, 3D models of the city, so that when we work on the project, we can cut any section we want and see how the terrain is inside the city. So we just, within two weeks ago, got that data 100% back from our surveyors. At the time, we were still doing our preliminary work as engineers, you know, starting to pull hydrology data, contacting TCEQ because they're going to be required in this entire process to have some middles to them. So they know that all this work is coming. We've been able to pull reports from them with everything that they have on the dams. And so we have all the information that will help assist us in being able to recreate the models of the three dam locations. So all the survey data we have. Our geotech work, 85% complete. They were collecting all this soil data, lots of soil data, up to 40 to 50 feet deep. Takes quite some time to collect and some time to process. I say 85% because they are running soil stability analysis. There's a lot of information at the back where we're at Camelot, whether or not the soils there can be reused or if we're going to have to remove off-site. So the soil stability analysis is what kind of remains in our geotech analysis. So all that work's been happening behind the scenes. Now, we are moving forward to land acquisitions. Now, in order for us to really determine how much land we're going to need to acquire from IPOA, we're going to have to really go back and forth with design. So it's going to be an iterative process. We don't want the city to have to purchase more land from IPOA than they need to. So we're running these analyses to see where, like for instance, towards the back where we have Camelot, how much of the widening of the road, the dam, is going to encroach into IPOA property. So at this point, if you're looking at the map, you see areas of potential acquisition. That's areas where IPOA currently owns. And so we don't know exactly where or how much we're going to acquire. But our surveyors have already pooled plots and they know which exact land that IPOA owns. And they're starting to pull deeds and property descriptions in preparation for working the legal descriptions required for land acquisition. So when LJA determines what land that we're going to need to actually acquire, we provide those legal descriptions and exhibits, supporting documents, and we submit that to the grant admin. And they take that and they start doing the, I guess, the land negotiations with the owners, the appraisals. And so that's something that they provide. But at this point, I feel like we are on schedule. All that preliminary work, we're getting all that data in, which allows us to start doing kind of more final engineering design.
Are there questions? I know that we got together with Dawn on the phone the other day and Randy had a lot of questions. And I just want to make sure that all those questions are answered and directed here. So do you want to go over some of that, Randy? Come on up to the microphone.
Okay. I had 13 questions that I asked because I'm Randy Frederick. I'm actually in charge of the parks and lakes. And it's kind of self-serving. I was wanting that dirt down there and I was very curious about the dirt as far as, you know, if they're going to reuse the dirt, great. If they're not going to use the dirt, I'd love to have it there at Fancher Park. It's taken a long time just to do the little spot, so I'd love to be able to have that dirt. But essentially, the question, myself, Kathy, and Dawn were there and C.D., you know, I asked about the survey, you know, when that would be done. And I guess Victoria just said, "It's done." The next one, as far as negotiations, from what we've been told, it's an appraised value. And so we're still, you know, we're waiting on... That was one of the questions is, when will the appraisal be done? And so essentially, that's in the process.
Yes. We started pulling preliminary information. And like I mentioned, we have to kind of finalize our engineering design to even determine exact acreage that we need to acquire from IPOA.
Okay. All right, that is... And then as far as... The next question was, you know, how long? Because we... The board does not want to hold up anything as far as the process. Our bylaws state that we have, it's got to be a minimum of 30 days from the first reading. There has to be three readings to the last reading to where we can actually vote. So if it's a case to where, you know, it's six months out, then we will have one on our normal monthly meeting, have one at the next monthly meeting, and have one at the next monthly meeting where we can vote. If it's a, you know, we're holding them up, we can actually have one reading, a couple of weeks later, have another reading. But we do have to have a quorum. We still have to have 25 people there. And then 30 days, you know, within that 30 days, then we can have another reading. So essentially, we can get that done in 30 days. And so... But that was... They didn't, from what I heard from Dawn, you know, we're still not in that zone where we have to have it done right yet. And so, okay. And then the next question was, when will the construction start? Well, is it an estimate, is it this year more than likely?
I don't see it happening this year, just like, because TCEQ, like I said, is required to do all sort of reviews on these projects. So I know that from our H&amp;H specialists that that can take six to 12 months sitting in their queue. So...
I just wanted to add to that. Victoria has mentioned that TCEQ's involved. As some of you know, it was TCEQ that directed that the Ivanhoe Dam be breached. And so TCEQ is looking at dam safety. So that we have to go through a lot of detailed review on our design before they're going to bless this project to go to construction.
Okay. All righty. And as y'all know, we have a park there at the end of the Camelot Dam and everything. As far as public lands, there are no public lands around there. So, you know, we were going to close that park down so that they could use it for their maintenance, you know, for their... Putting their material used there for their equipment and whatever because essentially, everything else on the other side is private. And so that was one, I was wanting to know when we would have to close it down. So it looks like it's not going to be this year. So that answered that question. Okay, and then one of the other main questions that we keep hearing is, will the lake have to be drained?
And I'll go ahead and take that one here publicly for you once more. So for that lake, yes, we do anticipate draining it for the duration of construction. And the reason is because if we were to go in and sheet pile or coffer dam that so that the lake could hold water while we excavated the earth and dam out and we have a rain that creates a flood situation, we have no way to manage that once there's basically just a steel wall in there. We have no control structures for releases. So we end up in a position where we're either going to backwater up more than what needs to be backed up and potentially flood somebody upstream or if we construct it low enough to let it spill and it spills to any significant amount, we risk a catastrophic failure and all of that sheet pile blowing out. So from a safety standpoint and a constructability standpoint, we do anticipate at this time needing to drain Tristan just for the... I mean, Camelot, sorry, just for the duration of construction.
All right, and that was one of the other questions I had as far as the dirt. As far as the dam itself, will it have to be completely removed?
And like Victoria said, we are waiting on the analysis from the geotechnical engineers right now. They've gone out, they've done their borings. And so we're looking at not only the material that's there and the way it's there right now, but simply the material, the quality of the material, and if we can reuse that. And so that's an unknown at this time.
Okay. And that was another one of my questions, if they couldn't use the dirt, could we have the dirt?
Yes.
Okay, and the answer was yes. And then the next question was, because it costs so much for us to spread the dirt, I asked, is there a way that there can be a dozer or something stationed at Fancher Park to where as they start delivering the dirt, they can spread it?
And so to that, what we would have is that the contractor would be asked to spoil the dirt in a specific location at this point, Fancher Park, and that when they spoil that dirt, that they're required to level it out, which doesn't mean that he would necessarily have a dozer there at all times, but he may send a dozer over there once a week to blade everything down. We'll have a requirement that it has to be left in a condition that's maintainable and that drains properly. There... That way, anybody would, in the future, would be able to mow it. It wouldn't be just a bunch of hills of dirt all over the place.
And the next question was, you know, once they start, how long does it normally take for them to do what they've got to do?
That's a fantastic question that I can't answer right now because I still don't know exactly the level of construction, right? We're not done with design. But we'll have a much better answer as we get closer in design.
Okay, and since we've talked, I've had other people ask, I know like up front, Ivanhoe was going to be considered a water retention pond?
A flood control pond, yes, sir.
What about, is Camelot still going to be that way or is it going to be back to a lake?
So it will be... We're going to adjust the outflow, the controls. So it will fluctuate some and the top portion of it will be flood control, but it will maintain water at all times.
Okay. This is an interesting question that I had posed to me. Can the lake be refilled?
Which lake?
Camelot.
Refilled?
What, like water pumped into it?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know where to get the water. But I'll tell you what we'll do is, as we get closer, we'll give you an estimate on what we expect natural, you know, conditions to take to refill that lake.
Yeah, that's a... I know, you know, if they were still considering it to be a lake, there's a lot of people that have a lot of docks and everything. They're going to be real high up off the, you know, off the ground. And that's what they were concerned about as far as, you know, kids falling off of them, you know. And, you know, if it's still going to be considered a lake, can we, you know, pump it out of Tristan? I'm not Tristan, but Galahad or, you know, I mean, can that... That was just a question. I didn't know if that was something we could do or if that... Because that's the... That lake back there is mainly just a rainwater lake. It's no... There's no stream that feeds it.
I'll tell you what, when we get a little bit closer, we'll evaluate that and give you a number so that everybody can take into consideration the cost of refilling that, even if it's with water from another lake. I mean, we're talking about the energy and pumping cost, right? So the fuel and things like that.
Okay, and then another one, they brought up Lake Conroe because it filled up too fast and they were worried about the dam giving way. How long can the dam be... How long can the lake be refilled after the dam's completed? Do you know?
That's what we'll give you an estimate on, on the natural refill. But we'll also look at a potential pumping into it, sir. But for exactly that reason, what happened at Conroe is why we're, you know, very cautious about any kind of potential fixed structure that we don't have the ability to truly control.
I know a lot of people were scared on that one, so anyway. Okay, that was all the main questions, so...
Is that all?
Y'all's turn.
One quickie, will the lake level of Camelot change any?
From its normal level right now?
Mm-hmm.
There's been discussion and questions, Dawn. I guess back in the day, and it must have been quite some time ago, the water level was higher than it has been. Now, it has not changed recently and the work we did that, when we redid the spillway, didn't affect the level. It's at the same level it has been, at least since, I think, somebody said in the 80s they did something to change it. So that's probably when it was lowered. Because they say, you know, the level was higher and docks weren't so far out of the water. But that's why this question is coming up.
So that was not looked at initially in the evaluation? There was the anticipation that it would not be changed from where it is right now? Is there... Does somebody have some data, any physical thing that we can look at to even evaluate? Because part of... And the reason I'm asking is we really do need to know that now because we're talking dam safety.
Excuse me, we have a comment in the back of the audience they can't hear. You have to...
I think that the bulkheads today that were present in those properties are probably about a foot and a half to two foot of water leveled down.
We have to... Joe, wait a minute. We have to ask everybody to come to the mic because we're broadcasting, we're on YouTube. And so although those of us in the room can hear you, people out there may not be able to. So speak loudly and close to the mic.
All right. I have a property on the back that has an existing bulkhead and there are other bulkheads along that same area. And the water level, about two weeks ago, maybe a month ago, we had a lot of rain and the water came up and it was about a foot, a foot and a half below, I mean, above where the, you know, the standard level's been. So I think that's probably about what the difference was, is a foot, a foot and a half, maybe two feet from where it's been to where the bulkheads that were built back in the, probably the 80s are built to kind of show where the water was.
So I think then that is the fluctuation that we talked about as what we call the flood pool whenever we're looking at lakes or reservoirs. We have the part of the water surface that moves up and down with rainfall and that's what we call the flood pool and that's where we get our flood control measurement from. And so I think we had talked about maybe adjusting the way it's controlled so that how fast that goes down. But I don't think we've considered a permanent full-time raise on that because if you don't have any ability to fluctuate, that means you have to pass, whatever rate the water comes to you, you have to get it out. And so that affects how that control works and potentially how you have to manage somebody out there during a rain event.
So I imagine it fluctuates even more when you've got a rain-fed lake.
It absolutely does.
You know.
So I actually was around in the 80s. And so as the gentleman in the back mentioned, the bulkhead heights, as well as the existing heights of the dam are both indications, a closer indication of where the lake level used to be set. And at the far end, where we have the current drainway, that was not the original from back in the 80s. And those things had washed out and been damaged in storms. I think it may have been Hurricane Bonnie when we had the last major set of dam blowouts. In any case, I think part of the question and consideration is, as the lakefront properties around there are intended to have lake access, I think there's the question of how much access can we give as far as right now, looking at where the usable level and fluctuation level is going to have to land for the, you know, the maximum standard drain-down level to give people the most mobility and access to be able to utilize the water, you know, as far as even, you know, little john boats and whatnot. It's, you know, tough if you've got six or eight inches of water versus, you know, 12 to 14. So if it's possible that we can look at where that base level lands relative to the minimal amount of fluctuation on the top that we need, that would be, I think, for the property owners, that would be a massive bonus consideration.
Yes, sir. We're happy to look at that. I have a note to evaluate what would be considered normal pool, which is where the lake would be trying to be maintained, and top-of-flood pool relative to what the anticipated flood events are looking like. And we'll look at that. From history, Mr. Harrington, do you know... Do you have any knowledge on why the new level is set where it is? Is that in response to some prior event?
Well, yes. And again, back in the, I don't want to say '84, '85, something like that, Hurricane Bonnie came through. That was the first recollection I have of Charmaine being washed out. And I've got photos from back then when, you know, everything was gone, just like it did, you know, back in 96. In any case, as has always been an issue for our community, capital resource to invest at a minimum. Most everything, of course, out here was still between the developer and the property owners association as far as strategy and planning and whatnot. And I think in much the same way as we've made do in the past, trying to plan for the future, they set that drainway lower at the end, reducing the lake level to minimize the risk that at some point in time, they could have a catastrophic failure of the entire dam. And so I think it was a combination of limited resources and doing the best they could to safeguard against future damages on the dam by creating a low-flow emergency overflow area rather than originally, which what they had was, you know, drain valves where they would actually mitigate the lake level that way. So I think it was simply about safeguarding against a massive failure in the future without breaking the bank at the time. So also, in terms of looking at that, what's the top layer of water that's going to fluctuate, actually referred to as?
Flood pool.
So when looking at the flood pool, I assume that that minimum value is a byproduct of what your overflow, your general passive or consistently present overflow area is, correct? Like on Charmaine here, we have a drain area that always, when it crests that, it's automatically draining, correct?
So that flood pool can be, the level of the flood pool can be controlled by just that, a passive spillway? Or it can be controlled by drain valves? The depth of that is determined by the surface area of land that drains into it, the way that land drains into it, and the design storm. And because we're working under some grant authorizations, there are some requirements to look at some very specific types of storm events so that we don't overwhelm and, A, cause a catastrophic failure, which you guys have seen in the past and that's why we're doing a lot of this, and that we can get through our TCEQ dam safety evaluations. And also that we try to do this in a way so that we do have a passive spillway, what we call an uncontrolled spillway. In other words, there's not a person responsible for deciding when to open a valve or not open a valve, in a way that doesn't create so much flow downstream. You know, it doesn't wait until it's just way too high. And it's not a really narrow spillway. We try to make a wide, broad-crested spillway so that that water can leave in a controlled manner when there's just an inch or two. And as the water builds up, it spills over that.
And so theoretically, the wider that area is of passive drain is, the less surface fluctuation is required, correct? Because it can drain faster with more area to drain, right?
To some degree, that's accurate. But to a greater degree, it's how much water is coming into the system because we can only put so much... You know, we're draining whatever, let's call it 100 acres. And we're trying to run, if we've got 10 inches of rain on 100 acres and we're trying to run that across a spillway that's 100 feet wide, you know, we're talking about a lot of depth. It's a lot more than 10 inches, right? Because it's just getting there faster than that. So we've got to look at all of those things. The one other thing I want to mention is that in the last few years, because we have had, for whatever reason you want to determine, whether it's climate change or just simply history, we've got a lot more data to look at. And what we call a 100-year storm, and that's a term that a lot of people hear, does not mean that we're only going to get one of those every 100 years. It means that every year, we get 1% chance of it happening. But that 100-year storm has gone up by about 50% statistically from the statistics that were done in the 1960s to the statistics that we use now under what's termed Atlas 14. So we have to look at all of those things.
Okay, are there any questions for anybody in the audience? You know, this is a town hall meeting. You guys get to talk as much as you want today. Ask any questions. I think, you know, we've talked about this grant before, so a lot of information is already out there. If there are no more questions about this... Oh, there's Randy again.
I know when the dam is taken out, is there any money allotted to, you know, because you have a lot of people back there, is there any money allotted to repair the roads to get those people out on the backside of Camelot?
A detour.
A detour?
That's an excellent question and right this minute, there's not. But let's talk in... in just when we get down to item number two.
Okay.
Watch it. They'll put your dirt back there. Okay. Questions, number two, questions and discussion regarding the $7.9 million grant. We have told you quite some time ago that the grant had been awarded. And there's a lot difference between the award and the contract. Once the contract is comes in, then you know you got that grant. And we were we were concerned because it'd taken so long to get it. But we finally got the contract last Friday, a week ago yesterday, and it was signed immediately and we sent it back. And thank you, God, that it's it's true. So now we're looking at the $7.9 million. This is a drainage grant. Again, guess who did the grant application and all the Dawn did. I mean, I love her. She's brilliant, too. Anyway, I would like Dawn to kind of explain what this $11.9 million grant is going to look like. It I know that we had hoped for something somewhat different. But we're going to get $8 million worth of work done, so we have to be very grateful. Dawn?
All right. So as the mayor mentioned, we've been hearing, as the mayor mentioned, we've been hearing for a long time that we've got $8 million coming. That's kind of a checks in the mail, you just watch for it kind of answer. Well, the check arrived last week. So we do have contract finally. You know, you guys passed, what, four years ago, a bond program? And the reason, a big part of what you passed that bond program for was because there was an opportunity to get funding for drainage projects. And it was specific for drainage projects. It was being offered by FEMA in response to Hurricane Harvey. The caveat on that program was that you had to have a dollar for every $3 the federal government put in. So we looked at about $8 million worth of work. That meant it was going to cost the city about $2 million. And so you guys passed a bond program. And this went on for a while and we kept hearing that FEMA and TIDM were evaluating these grants. And when it came down, they said, you know, Ivanhoe, y'all had a great application, but you're just out of the money. Sorry. Maybe we'll have something for you later. Well, this went on for a while and the state of Texas stepped up through the GLO and said, hey, we're going to run a program. And some of these grants that didn't quite make it into the money for FEMA, we're going to come back and reevaluate those and see about funding them. And oh, by the way, when we do it with state money, because if you had if you had gotten state dollars to to cover your 25% of the federal program, there'll be no match on on our program. So the state will give you the entirety of the grant, but it will we'll look at it. And lo and behold, they came back and they said, Ivanhoe, you were close enough and your grant looks good. So you guys are going to qualify and you're not going to qualify for six of the $8 million. You're going to qualify for eight of the $8 million you requested. So with that, they said, just hang on, checks in the mail. Well, we did that for about two more years. And like the mayor said, the the contract arrived last week. That being said, GLO also said, whatever project you had submitted for FEMA, and FEMA said, this will be drainage projects, not road projects, will be your project that you execute under the GLO program. Well, when we assembled this grant, we looked at all the places that we could qualify under FEMA regulations as drainage. And with that, we were going to do some collateral repairs. So if we pull up culverts, we rework ditches, there are things that we have to do to fix roads, to harden the road surface where you have a lot of washouts and those kind of things to mitigate future problems. So we worked in a lot of road work to our drainage project. What it did, though, was that it caused the work to sort of be scattered all over the city because we had to target drainage. And so what you see on our maps here, not this orange part here, but all of these red marks that are all scattered all over the city, all of that road work qualifies as part of the drainage project, the $8 million drainage project.
Dawn?
Yes, sir.
Would you mind kind of pointing out where the road where the red is? I'm colorblind and can't see.
Oh, yes, sir. Sure. Sorry about that. I'm going to keep that in mind next time and we're going to pick another color for you. So anywhere really that you guys have sort of low spots in the roads where the drainage crosses and heads towards a ditch? So you see there's marks here, 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 kind of in the middle of the neighborhood, across the back where water comes into Ivanhoe here, some of the main roads where there's some steep sections that we could qualify under some drainage issues, reworking road ditches, those sorts of things. As we get back here, somebody's going to have to help me out with the name of the lake here.
Galahad.
Thank you.
Tristan.
Oh, Tristan.
Okay, Tristan. So we've got some some drainage that comes into Tristan from the west, some that comes in from the east, some from the north. So each place that we have those opportunities to address drainage issues, we captured road work there. So and and the same thing happens as we move to the south, on either side of the lake here. I'm going to pan up just a little bit. So here on Galahad, on either side, as we've got locations that the water comes towards the lake from the neighborhood, from the city. And you asked about the road work in the back for the folks that are here. So the green has already been done. That's completed work. But we've got some red on here, even across the back where it does have drainage that goes towards the lake. All of that can be reworked. So there is road work that's going to happen in conjunction with the $8 million project that will help support an extra route for these folks to go around while the dam is under construction.
Question, Dawn?
Yes, ma'am.
We are a point here. We have gotten a $375,000 CDBG grant, which we are dedicating to 22nd Street, to finish the 22nd Street all the way around. Now, since this is part of the 8 million, how do we address that? Do?
We'll we'll work through that. And honestly, $8 million went a lot further four years ago than it does today. So I think we may just have to say this is a piece that gets covered under another opportunity. And so that money can be moved to another location because there's honestly not going to be as much. I mean, we all know what's happened with prices and COVID and supply chain. So we're going to have to be sensitive to that and and find the spots that give us the best bang for the buck while we still address the drainage requirement of the program.
So with this CDBG grant, would it be, it'll probably take more than the $375,000 to do what we thought we could do with $375,000. So maybe what we need to do is leave out that part that's going to be in the 8 million?
Yeah, we'll we'll have to work through exactly which pieces we can do where. And we'll sit down with all of the grants like we've done previously and and we'll add that in and reevaluate all of our prices once more. And we'll have to continually do that as as prices change, you know. Hopefully, we'll get some handle on the fuel situation, but fuel is dramatically affecting our prices of construction right now.
Right. Thank you. Okay, just any other comments, Dawn? Does anybody have any comments here or questions? Now's the time for questions.
And I have placed, it's a little bit hard to see on the screen. I have placed some paper maps around the room also, one near the door, one at the back, and one over here at the side, if anybody would like to take a look at those closer and ask me anything later.
We have a question comes from the Warren.
Yes, sir.
When do you see this work starting?
So, great question. And since we just got the contract.
What's the timeline on it?
Jessica, you want to?
So for the the 7.9, I can't remember off the top of my head what it is since we just got that contract. So we're kind of opening up that file again, since we've been waiting. But usually, it's just like the other, the 11.48 million, it's going to take some time to get through all the processes that General Land Office requires of us, get through design before we can get to construction. So, I mean, it could be a year, year and a half before construction starts on that project specifically.
So one thing we will do, we'll have a kickoff meeting for this before too long. We'll come back and reevaluate exactly how far $8 million can go. And then we'll need to look at, just like we've done with the road bond work, prioritizing where we start because we'll have to start getting geotech and and survey and all of those things that have to happen even before we can start putting plans together. So there'll be a process to to prioritize these once we figure out exactly how far the the $8 million can go at this point.
FYI, the kickoff meeting is at 10 o'clock in the morning on April 5.
Thank you, ma'am.
And council members, please let me know if you're going to be here because if if we have a quorum, then I have to have an agenda. Otherwise, we just do kickoff meeting.
May I have one more question? All the roads that we've seen, the road work I've seen has been primarily asphalt. Is there any plans to to actually improve road bases and go back in with a non-asphalt type road in some of the the areas where, you know, this is done to be able to stretch the dollars? Because I think if we got a better road base and had a, you know, a Colicchi or some other type of road base that could be maintained, we could have better roads without necessarily having to go asphalt in all the areas. Just a question.
Actually, some of the roads that we worked on on the road bond this year did get base improvements. So a lot of the roads that we have been doing, aside from the first 2021, 2020 road bond didn't have base, it was an asphalt. But the one that we recently did had subgrade improvements and base improvements.
Plus the asphalt or without asphalt?
With asphalt. So whatever we completed recently had all sections upgraded.
But is there an opportunity to stretch money from getting that base and not necessarily have an asphalt in the areas? Because that, you know, we have a lot of communities around with that kind of roads that work well, and it makes the dollars go well to get more.
Agreed. So there are options. And we've talked about chip seal, if the city would would want to go that route. And then there's this new surface that Gulf Coast is doing this oil sand surface, which you see in the front at the marshal's office. So there are options of more, I guess, yeah. So there there are options and we can present that when we're at that point. But it would be a call that the the city ultimately makes. Yeah.
And well, okay, within the grant?
Yeah. So when the grant, when you write the grant, it says road improvements. They don't necessarily hone down on what the road improvement surface is. It's just basically you need to improve the base. I know that's required of the contract. You can't just put a surface. So the surface itself is something that can be discussed on what options that the city wants to move forward with.
Yeah, I guess my question is not so much the base or the material used is can we adjust distance? I mean, instead of doing a half a mile at one one surface, if we could go three quarters of a mile, will they permit that through the grant?
Adjusting stationings of their project limits. I personally have had that done in other projects. I don't see that it being an issue, but that would be a grant administrator question.
No, that wouldn't be an issue. It can be done. You just have to do what they call Form Statement Amendment. And you have to go through the long process of them approving it, asking why you're extending or shortening certain areas, but you can do it.
But is there is there a a reverse chip seal that?
A reverse chip seal?
Yeah. Williamson County uses, what I understand, is called a reverse chip seal. They put road base down, they spread oil over it, and then come back with rock on top.
That's chip seal.
That's chip.
Yeah. So chip seal is where we throw oil down first and then you roll the rocks in. And if it's a double chip seal, you would do that application again.
Okay, maybe that was the thing, double chip seal.
Yeah.
So here's a question for you. On the, I'm sorry, Skip, this won't work well for you, but on the red highlighted segments in the map, that's all relative to the, correct me if I'm wrong, the $8 million grant, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So for all of those segments, at the very least, there is drainage construction, presumably in the ditches, culverts, et cetera. And in some, or maybe most of those areas, we're going to come back in and do the road repair work on top, correct?
Yeah. So if you look, there's a table right there on the corner on the right-hand side. It will list the site, because there are 35, 35 sites in the $8 million project. It'll tell you the site number, the location with the road, and then the proposed improvements. So you so yes, so.
Does that include the finished surface application on those details?
Yeah. So there are culvert improvements, and then we would improve the road by putting in a surface course.
I guess the the faster way to get to the to the question I'm asking is, on those items, as a blanket, is there an asphalt top? Is there a chip sealed top? Or is there any top surface finish included on those items at present?
No, I think it was just a general road improvement. So there is no final design or like, we have not discussed what surface.
Okay. So so the amount of these projects that we're going to be able to complete that we have proposed is going to hinge significantly on what finished surface that we leave, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So at present, there's not like a swag in there for at minimum chip seal or anything like that?
There there was.
Okay.
In in 2018.
Right. But what what was?
It was a chip seal.
Okay, great. So.
It was an estimate for chip seal with some base improvements. And so whenever we wrote the whenever we wrote the grant to FEMA, when we wrote the grant to FEMA, we put, because we had to stay focused on on drainage and we could not show it as a as a road improvement project, we simply wrote it up as improve and harden the road surface to to mitigate future erosion problems.
And some minimum sealing surface falls under that, correct?
When we estimated the dollars, we did it with chip seal. But we did not document that anywhere in the paperwork. So they have no idea what hardening means.
Perfect. Thank you.
It's all the way you present it.
Every time.
Any any questions, anyone?
So you're saying this is going to take, what, two years?
At least.
Before we start?
Well, not before we start, but it'll it'll take several years to get it complete. It'll probably take a year before we start.
Okay. So what about, you know, expediting a lot of the permitting and stuff like that in order to get us started earlier?
The permitting for GLO or TCU?
For whatever you have to do in order to get started.
Because the permits require review of plans. And so we can't get our plans done until we get our surveys and geotech done. And so we have to, they're just, we have to do these in a in a very specific order to get to that permitting position. It's it's.
So you have to submit?
Yes, ma'am.
Dawn, you need to be on mic.
Sorry about that. Yes, ma'am. It's 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 a different type of permitting than, say, environmental, where you can just have them observe what's there and and explain what you plan to do. These are actual physical engineered plans that have to be reviewed and blessed by the agency that manages dam safety and and some of those things. Yes, ma'am?
It's government.
It's government.
Yeah. But you can expedite a government. They'll take that extra money.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I'm going to move along to the next one. Questions and discussion regarding community development block grant. I really kind of talked about that. What we applied for was 22nd Street. And she's showing us on that map, this this loop back in the back. And it it really kind of depends on cost. Now, we're going to be able to get that work done faster than than this other grant work. You know, we did, last year, we got a grant from a CDBG grant, and that's how we finished Durwood. And that happened pretty quickly. Once that grant was approved, we, you know, we really rapidly got Durwood done. And that's the same type of grant that this 22nd Street grant is. So it could be that that work's done a lot sooner than, I'm sure it's going to be done a lot sooner.
I agree. Do you guys have the contract? Or do we know it's coming? It's?
Again, we're waiting for the contract.
Oh, okay.
I had, so the CDBG Community Development Block Grant isn't my group that I usually work in, but I did talk to them. And I it's already been applied for, right? It's the application's done. So I think they're thinking in the next round, so next year, that Ivanhoe will get awarded. And you are correct, TDA, Texas Department of Agriculture, is much faster than the General. than the General Land Office when it comes to their projects. So, it will definitely be done before the other two.
Does everybody realize how blessed we are? Wow. Anyway, are there any questions about that from the audience? All right. Questions and discussion regarding community resilience, resiliency grant. This is the one I've been talking, I had talked so much about, the five million dollar grant for community building up front. This building was going to house a clinic. It was going to, there was all kinds of things that was, were going to be in, within this project. The project was done by Valerie Weber. She did an amazing job. It was phenomenal. We were all sure that that grant was going to be, you know, was going to go through. So sure that we talked about it very positively. And what happened right at the end was the people that owned the land up there decided they weren't going to sell. And so, you get points. You know, your, your application gets points based on whether you're ready for the, you know, one of them was shovel ready. Well, shovel ready means you're ready to jump on it and get it done. Well, when, when we were notified just a few days before the grant deadline that, that they decided not to sell us the land, we didn't have, you know, that takes off major points. So, that, that opportunity was lost. But somehow, we're going to end up being able to do this. And the reason we applied for, for a building because there had been comments about, you know, why, what do we need a building for? There are lots of pluses of that. I would love for Valerie to show us sometimes what that project looked like. But the other thing is that particular grant opportunity was not for road work. The only thing that really fit us was the building that we'd been talking, talking about. So, it wasn't like, oh, you're applying for a building when we could have gotten road work done. No. It wasn't, it wasn't either or. It was something that, that that's the only thing that that grant application, that particular opportunity fit. So, just to clarify that. Were there any questions about that? I just wanted to clarify it so that everybody understood where that was from. Okay. Pending comprehensive plan and future economic development. We put this, we got a grant, another grant to do a comprehensive plan. And that, we were hoping to have the draft of that much sooner. We got it yesterday. So, really, we, we thought that we would have it in time enough to be able to talk about some of the points in there, but we haven't had time enough to unpack the box. So, that we'll, we'll talk about in a future time. As far as economic development, we want to let you know, I called Lynn Hancock, the one that had the barbecue place, and asked him if he was going to take his temporarily closed sign down at any time in the near future. And come to find out, someone else is going to rent that space and have a food, a restaurant there. Well, we can't, it's takeout. It'll be like Lynn had it, basically. And it'll be maybe a different type of food, but it's going to happen within the next couple of weeks. That's why they hadn't taken the sign down. Yes, we, we like food. So, so, that'll happen within the next couple of weeks. But that's why they didn't take the sign down because it's going to be redone and utilized for the new people that are coming in there. And the sales tax offer that, it's, it all contributes to, to our economic growth. I don't know how many of you are aware of census figures, but I had a long conversation with Congressman Babbin last Sunday. Our census figures are down. We had approximately close to 1,500 population estimate in 2010. 2020 puts us at 1,300 and something. And, and we have grown. Just before the census came out, we were estimated to be about 2,000 people, which I think is probably accurate. But the census this year because of COVID and everything is just so far off. The county was 22,000 people. Now, they say it's 17,000. We have not lost 5,000 people. And, and we're all stuck with it. The problem is grants, money is based on population. And so, you know, when, when your population goes down, you know, your grant opportunities go, or the, the amount of grants you can get are, is diminished too. So, there's a lot of concern out there, but I, and I don't know that there's anything that can be done. They're not going to do a new census. And, you know, my opinion that they should have stopped it right there when, when COVID happened. I mean, the whole country shut down before the census was finished. And especially in rural areas, it affected us because of the way they did the census out in rural areas. They didn't mail everything the way they do in, in cities. And so, it's, it's just off. And I don't know what, what can be done, but I wanted to know what conversation there was at the national level. And I guess the whole country is having the same issues. Now, this is kind of an opportunity. It's, it's pretty open. If anybody wants to ask any questions, Debbie Peterson, would you like to come up to the microphone? Get close, get close so you can hear it.
Well, since we talked about all the money we've been given, I'm kind of like questioning the money we already have. How much is left in the bond fund?
600,000, is it, CD?
Yeah, about that.
About 600,000.
Okay.
And 100,000, the 11 and a half million dollar grant, it does have a 1%, match, which is nothing, you know. So, it's $100,000. But that's one of the reasons we wanted to make sure we had that $100,000.
Oh, yeah. Is, in the bond, is there a deadline that, you know, that we have to use that money by?
They're asking us what we're going to be spending that on because we need, we do need to spend it. We've been trying to also look at and see where, like, okay, now we have an idea.
Like the little spaces in between the reds.
Yes. That's what I'm looking at. Once we, you know, now that we've got these maps and we know what's going to be done, we can say, okay, we can complement or fill in with, with the rest of our bond money. The other, the other thing to think about, Ivanhoe is considered 57% low to moderate income. But like most of the, like the CDBG grant and most of these other ones, you have to prove LMI, low to moderate income. So, one of the reasons, you can spend bond money anywhere you want. You can't, you, you can't designate, or you can't apply for money for regular grants if it's not LMI.
Yes.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
So, it's like, CD pointed out to us when we were looking at what, what bond work we were going to be doing, make sure that it's in an area where normally it wouldn't qualify. A grant, well, you can't get a grant for that area.
Yes.
You, so, so, you, you try to utilize the, the bond money in areas where you can't get grants.
Okay. And this is an old one here. Have we finally finished all the Harvey work?
Oh, Harvey.
Have we got, I know.
This is all, this is all Harvey.
This is Harvey.
Is Harvey. Okay.
This is all about flooding because of Harvey.
It's been, you know, what, five, six years.
Well, that's government.
I know. Okay. That's what.
Yep.
See, when you're trying to explain this, there's somebody else out there that, between the numbers and the names of what it's called, and everybody's like, what happened to this money? Well, that is that money. No, that's another.
This is all, right now, what's going on is Harvey. And we, we actually have some sites that have not.
That's where some people are confused.
Yeah. So, let me, let me add just a little bit, mayor, if that's okay. Harvey was such a huge event, and it got so much attention at so many levels, that there's still money coming down on the Harvey that hasn't even, that, that people haven't been able to necessarily even apply for yet. There's, there's more money still coming for Harvey. It will be a long time before we finish.
Okay.
But there are lots of Harvey, there's, there's lots of buckets. And so, there's a lot of projects. So, the Harvey money means a lot of things. It's not a grant. It's, it's a lot of things. And it's still coming.
Okay.
Another thing, there's supposedly 160, close to 162 million dollars coming to debt cog. And it's to be utilized within the seven counties that were affected by Harvey. And in Tyler County, Tyler County is one of those, but in Tyler County, it's only 75979. The entire county wasn't considered affected. But 75979 is actually one of the most affected. Is that the, is that the term they use? Yeah. Anyway, so, I have been going to debt cog meetings. I've been running up to debt cog, trying to get information about how that money is going to be dispersed. But we will be getting money. We don't know how much, but we're chasing that money too. So, you know, hey. From what I, and, and there'll be, again, on April 5th, there's going to be a, a public hearing regarding that money. Now, they were hoping, what, what happens with this, with debt cog, they formed a committee of the seven judges that were, the judges of those counties that were affected. And they came up with a plan on how to distribute this money. It has not been made public yet. It's been submitted to GLO. GLO has to approve what they call the mod, the method of distribution. And then they have public hearings. They were hoping to have the information from GLO back by April 5th. But they've already announced a public hearing, so it's going to happen. It's going to happen here in Woodville, actually, at 7:00 in the evening on April 5th. And it's doubtful that they'll get the word back from Globe. But since they've already announced the meeting, it's going to happen. CD and I will be present. I know a lot of other people that are going to show up. We, you know, we'll see what, but the information is scarce right now. The only thing I do know is that the judges said, okay, out of this money, they're, they're going to take 5 million for each county. And then, the next 6 million is going to be, from each county, is going to be dedicated to broadband. But it still leaves another 92 million dollars up in the air for the other, for the rest of it. And I understand, and it's, I haven't gotten specific information, that they're, it's based on population, low to moderate income, and most affected. So, that, they, they came up with some sort of formula that throughout those seven counties, this is what, how they're going to distribute that other 92 million dollars. Trying to figure out how it's going.
We'll take what we can get.
Exactly. And we'll be very grateful for whatever we can get.
And I'd like to thank Kathy and the council for working so hard with these people to get these grants. This is like the, you know, we are very fortunate and blessed to get this amount of money. Thank you.
Absolutely. Every time I go to regional meetings, I gloat. Okay. Kami?
Hi, I'm Kami Moore. So, I have a question, I guess, for Langford. Two years ago, I applied, well, probably about three years ago, I applied because I have one of the flooded properties that continues to flood over and over again. And so, I didn't want to assume that any of these things applied to that situation because it was like, oof, over my head. Because I'm not into the bridges and the dams or anything like that. I just have a property that has been, I've been waiting on, I've been working with. Got a little frustrated along my way because I have a son that is disabled, and we can't move our lives forward until we get out of the situation.
Kami, I hate to say this, but this is something personal of yours.
Well, it's okay. It's just that.
It's not, it's not on the agenda, honey. It's not on the agenda.
Okay. Well, any question?
But what you could do, if you want to talk to Jessica after the meeting?
No, I just wanted to know, because I didn't want to assume that all of this was about anything but that. Is it part of it?
Yeah.
Okay. So, if you just let me finish.
Kami, you're referring to individual assistance. What this meeting is about is public assistance.
Okay. Well, I just thought that, you know, I didn't want to assume that I was just going to cut myself off and not ask my question. Because my question was, is this part of that? And, you know, is this part of what's going to happen with any of this money? Because obviously, I've been waiting. And I waited through this whole meeting to find out that my question that I have.
Yeah. All this, all this money is.
Apply to me at all or any.
No. No, that's a different, yeah. Personal stuff goes in a different channel. It's through a different.
That was my question. Is that, you know, did it have anything to do with that? And obviously, it doesn't. It's just you and me.
It does not.
Okay. Does anybody else have?
My question may not be allowed either.
If you, just give us your name.
John Avery. I've noticed a lot of spectrum trucks and telephone work going on. Are we getting high-speed internet by any chance or cable?
There's, there have been comments to that, you know. I know a gentleman from the Spectrum said, yes, they would be coming.
Does he work with anybody to get that in?
I spoke to one of the men that's driving around in, in the spectrum truck, and he said it's coming. He said it'll be here by the end of the year. Don't hold my feet to the fire. But if you go into Woodville, you'll notice that AT&amp;T is running fiber cable from, they're going to run it all the way to Hillister. So, there's some doubting Thomases.
Moving cables because of the highway work that's going to be done.
That's all fiber, that's all fiber optic cable that's going in the ground. There's some doubting Thomases, and I don't know if it's going to come in here or not. But I was told by Spectrum to stand by, they'll be here by the end of the year. I got my fingers crossed.
Okay. Thank you.
Again, your name, like we didn't know.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Kelly Scroggins. I am.
Lift the microphone up a little bit, honey.
Okay, better.
You're a little taller than Debbie.
Okay, better. Good morning. My name is Kelly Scroggins. I do not have the knowledge base that you guys have, but I'm very excited. I just, I'm trying to make sure I have this right in layperson terms, okay? So, on the big map, when you look at the whole thing, the green, the orange, the blue, and the turquoise are things that are already done. Right?
Correct.
Okay. And that money came out of the bond fund to fix all those things?
So, the green came out of grant funds.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Let me, green was road, road bond in 2020.
Okay.
Orange was 2021 road bond. The blue.
Wait, we got a problem here. Because this green back here, that was grant.
Is it mixed up?
Yes, it's, it's in that.
Oh, sorry. That lumped it all, everything completed in that year. So, that year, we worked on the 2020 road bond, Durden Road, which, or Durden Drive, which was part of the TDA grant. And then the back with 17th, 19th, and Lakeview, that was Harvey round one funding. So, that's all green.
Okay.
So, the, the orange is the road bond, which we just completed this year.
Okay.
And then the blue, the entrance improvement project, which was funded by the Water Development Board. And then we have the teal or turquoise was the improvements that the city did for the detour. I believe the fund was coming from the bond for the materials or.
Material, yeah, some of it.
Yeah.
Cool. Very cool. The, the map is, is awesome. I tried to take a picture to show my neighbors, but I'm just making sure I have it right. So, number one on our quorum, the 11.48 million dollars, that's everything purple on the map?
Red.
It's actually red.
This color.
Number one is red?
Oh, number one is, no, it's the.
Oh, no. Number one on, on the agenda is red. Number one is red. Number two is, is number two purple?
Did I get that backwards?
Yeah, you got it backwards. So, yes. So, one on the.
Sorry, guys. Too much money.
One on the agenda, the 11.48, that is what we are currently in design. So, it'll be the location of the dams. So, the three locations. So, that's.
Hobenhoe.
The purple, purple on the map. Okay.
Right. Camelot.
So, two, the 7.9 million grant, that is the one that's dispersed around the city.
That's the red.
Uh huh.
Okay. And, and we still have number three on the list.
We have number three on the list, but it's not shown on the map because we don't quite have the funding yet.
We don't have the contract yet, but it's, it's, that's. But it's coming. 22nd Street.
Yes.
It'll take 22nd Street all the way. Okay. So, number three on the papers is, is not displayed on the map, but it's, it's an addition to everything that's up there.
It's to do the entirety of the 22nd Street.
Woo-hoo. And then we still have money in the bond fund. And so, that's going to be more colors on the map down the road?
Yes, ma'am.
That is just, that's just nothing short of amazing. Thank you, guys. I just want to make sure I had it right because I, some of the things we're talking.
If you have any other questions, just ask.
Yeah, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you.
I'm Lloyd Almsberg. I just have a simple one on, on Lakewood. Is the dam project going to actually finish the, the total road? Or is that going to come out of the bond? Or is it going to be done?
So, are we talking about this section here? Can you see on the map, this piece right here?
I'm talking about all the way to the highway.
Oh, all the way out?
Yeah.
So, no, sir. There's not currently a, a plan for that, but we don't have the, we don't.
Could we not?
We, we don't have the details yet of where the rest of the bond money would be spent. The other thing, like the mayor said, there.
The other thing, like the mayor said, there is more grant money out there. So before we go through the details of, of defining exactly where any remaining bond money needs to go, we're going to try to figure out everything that we can do under grant money. And so we're still working through that process of all that Harvey money and, and trying to wrap our arms around all the dollars and pennies that we can find before we start spending your money.
Yeah, well, that, I was just wondering about that, because I thought that was in the plan to, to start right at the highway and finish down to-
Right, and Lloyd, what we, what we found out is, the money just doesn't go that far.
Okay.
You know, we were hoping to get the whole of Lakewood done, and we just, the money-
Okay, that was, that was my question, because it's, that's what it appeared to me, that it wouldn't happen.
Yeah.
Okay, but that's in the plan for hopefully a grant that-
Oh, absolutely. And, and like I say, we don't know what money we're going to get from Tyler County with this, this other round of funding that's coming through DedCog.
Yeah.
And we're going to have to look at how, a project, you know, our project that could, how we could utilize that money. I mean, we can find all ways, all kinds of ways to spend the money.
Oh, yeah.
I just, we just have to find out how much we're going to be getting.
Yeah. All right, now, the other part of that is, now that I know that isn't going to be paved, then all the sections at the dam, well, yeah, but right now, I'm used to it.
Right, right.
But the sections near the dam, you're going to put an asphalt finish on that, aren't you? And then so you're going to have a little asphalt finish at Camelot, and then the one that you just did on, on Galahad, and then you'll have another one where you're going to put in the culverts on Tristan.
Yep.
Okay? But then, there'd just be little sections there paved.
It's kind of like the Texas Water Development Board project, that, you know, we got that bridge in, and it's, it's, I'd love to be able to get it all done.
Oh, yeah. Okay, well, that's what I was wondering, I, I was really thinking, because that's such a traveled road by everyone.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, that's one of our main focuses.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir. The, the other thing that we have to be very cognizant of is every time there's money available through these grant programs, there are strings, for lack of a better term, one, where we can use it, and two, what we can use it for, which is why the eight million dollars is scattered out, because it is a drainage project, that we get to do some road work in, in conjunction with that.